Look at that. You're a pro.
Say this for the file here. Today is Wednesday. August twenty third. Two thousand twenty three and it is about six o'clock couple minutes before. Ray was gonna come in.
Why does Ray?
Well. I did not get a visit till three P M this afternoon.
This is really disturbing.
I'm not discussing the master plan.
So can I call Ray and what if um?
I don't think we need Ray for this. We're talking about short term rentals.
I'm great. You don't need him tonight?
I mean. I don't think you do.
Why pay? Yeah.
Yeah, I already agree with that.
I'm gonna call Ray. Oh, we don't.
And we're also talking about usable space and definitions. I mean, there's more to it, but. For our discussion tonight, I we might have questions that we.
Right.
Ask you to get answers for, but I believe we need him on for.
Right, and I did talk to him and. He's the one who made the suggestion about exactly where to put it, and I agree, made sense to put it there because initially. I had put it somewhere else and he said, really goes here. And I.
Hello. How was the game?
Oh, well, vacations. I mean, I use vacation time, but. It was work.
You avoid?
No, I said it was work. Driving to Ohio, moving my daughter into college campus.
But what works been coming down?
She's a terrible trouble companion.
Be easy for you one.
She is. Drive more than an hour with her. She's miserable. Really? Yeah. I wanted to take it, you know, a couple hours and go up to Niagara Falls and she's like. So come on.
Like you take a five mile candidate.
Yeah.
And I travel, I don't talk. But he likes to talk all the time, keep them. I'm going like.
Yeah. I like to explore and check out areas. He knows. We had nice moments.
They don't want to look in any of them.
Young adults.
Number four fifteen, that's four fourteen.
And now it's all ready. I left messages.
Fine.
I left messages to say you didn't make the call, so.
Okay.
Are you ready to go?
Yes, you are.
All right, let's follow meeting order, please. Steve Noseworthy and Mark German are both excused. Danielle will be seated tonight.
Okay, so I think Ryan is here because he was impressed with him. South Peak is a.
I was interested in that, but Karina told me that. They weren't gonna be on, but I was still very interested in the. Conversation around changes to the land use.
I just didn't want you to be hanging out.
I appreciate that.
So first item on the agenda, consideration of meeting minutes for August ninth, two thousand twenty three. Does anyone have any? Questions, comments, changes?
Yes. Just just the number when we were talking about the development department street and it. Said we. The minutes thought we had said. That it needed thirty units when it needed thirty nine parking spaces. Sorry, parking spaces.
Yeah.
I don't ever remember us discussing any other number than thirty nine. In that that conversation.
Maybe she just couldn't hear.
Either she couldn't hear or someone misspoke or something because it was. Thirty nine repeated multiple times, so.
Okay. It was nineteen.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think thirty nine. I mean, it says right in seven eighty totally equals thirty nine parking spaces. Yes, thirty nine.
Okay.
And then page twenty two. I couldn't find a man, maybe Mark, or you. There, so. Could be that it was an L C that I just didn't.
Hey, can you sign in?
No. I had a long list, but Mark was not one of those names. I'm just gonna leave a blank.
Couple other people that spoke. Do we have numbers for them? Maybe we can call and ask them.
We want to hear.
Yeah, I think Jane Leslie seemed to recognize a few of those people, so maybe ask her if she knows who they were. Anyone have anything else? Is your motion to approve the minutes with changes?
So moved.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Shane, do you know you're gonna vote for?
Oh, I wasn't here, so I can't. I don't feel that I can.
Oh, yes, extension. Next week, next on the agenda, South Peak Resort Revised Master Plan. So they have asked. Has everyone seen the email? I'll read it out loud. Scott McSeal. Hi, Carol Hopeall as well. This email is to confirm that we will not be in attendance at tonight's planning board meeting. Would be happy to attend a future meeting to continue the discussion on the master plan. But since the initial meeting on the master plan was a joint meeting with the B O S, we request that any subsequent meetings also have the B O S in attendance. As well as town council. Let me know some potential dates in September for this joint meeting, and I will confirm our team's availability. Sincerely, Scott P. McSeal.
So.
Paul?
Yeah. First of all, Boris like would have nothing to do with master plan. So if they don't want to come, tell Boris like them come. And they're gonna be waiting a long time. If you look in our land use plan ordinance, it states it's all. The the master plan is all. Directed and guided by planning board. For a planned phase development, cost of development, all of that. The Board of Selectmen. Have the. Authority. And responsibility to do the developer agreement. Which has already been done. So anything could be, you know, those can be changed that way, but. I don't see the. And and we had asked. And I believe it was OJ that had. Check with Karina because she was the one or check with other board members. About a meeting.
That we wanted to have with the town council.
And I, from what I see, that never happened, but what happened was there was a meeting that happened with. I don't know where that went somewhere in here. It happened with. The. That review committee, Ray Corber, Karina. Everybody but the planning board, so. I don't know what happened there, but. I I would think that before we move any further that we should. That we should. Have our. Meeting that we asked for with the town council, so we can ask them the questions that we want to ask.
Anyone have any other thoughts? I guess I tend to agree, Paul. Yeah, we should. We should be able to consult with the council as a board.
I found a memory here. I mean, as far as I can say, we don't have to meet with them at all. We meet with. South Peak about an amended master plan. We could just run underneath the two thousand six. Which is what we've been running under for all these years, so that them all. All of the. Approvals against the go against this two thousand six master plan, which is what Jason Dennis said. And that member ran in front of the technical review committee. The plan, I guess, the planning board too. Plan. I don't want to tell for you to get involved, then it was supposed to be a planning board that was supposed to talk to Jason Dennis. So I think. Truly, I think we we need to meet with Jason Dennis. And. Discuss these items. If we have questions, I would rather ask him rather than get the second hand from the technical review committee or. Someone else.
Okay.
But not meet with him. At a public meeting.
We can meet.
Well, they can be, well, they can be back and forth discussion.
We can meet, we can meet before. Ask him, did this, did this one go? Jason Dennis and the technical review committee meet with the public? Or they didn't?
No.
So.
I'm I'm not asking the history at much. What would be most productive to move this board? You've been screaming for a for an updated master plan more than anyone on this board.
Revenge.
So to say we just go back and operate under the two thousand six one is very confusing.
Well.
And then and then to 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 suggest a meeting with Jason Dennis, I think Jason should be involved. Um, just because the. The. Fifteen year old. Master plan. Was not done the way that. Typically, it is done by this town or other towns.
Actually, that's, I haven't read it yet, but apparently the. Town zoning laws does allow it to be done.
Our way?
The way we've been doing it, so I have to read it a little more.
So. I mean, I I would wonder if it's most productive to have this meeting. No, you can't mandate the board of selectmen to come. Yes, you can invite them to come. If they come, they come. If they don't, they don't. But we're not gonna stop the meeting because they didn't show up. Um, and we could have Jason Dennis here. Um, I assume they're gonna bring Derek Lick. And we can have the discussion on all these. Points that 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 we have outlined there and. If there's some. Concern that we have, where we want to talk to Jason Dennis in private without them to get some legal advice, we can do that. Either during the meeting, we could break into non-public or wait till the end of the session, not make any decisions and go into non-public with Jason Dennis. Seems to me that'd be the most productive way to move forward, but I'm open to whatever.
I would rather meet with Jason. Prior to the meeting. Come up with any questions we have. That we might have that we would want to get answers to prior to a meeting with. Mr. Lick and his South Peak. Partners, and then if they if they want to have a a meeting, at least we'll have had the the ability to talk to Jason Dennis. Prior to the meeting, say, look, we have, I have concerns about certain questions here or there. I'd like to know what you think about before we get into meeting. Because he says that they have no relevance, or yeah, that's, you know. You guys can control us from this point of view, or so. How I see it, I mean. This. The conclusions and recommendations from the memo. Of August twenty first gives the recommendations. From Jason, and I have questions about his recommendations, so I could ask those in front of the South Peak. I'd rather ask Jason. If he wants to in a non-public session and and we can discuss.
Okay, I I don't object to that.
I. I agree. I think we should talk. We'll talk to the town attorney prior to. The hearing. And also, I would point out the planning board as a selectman's representative on it, he can. Communicate back and forth or convey any concerns the other boardrooms have about. Master plan, so I don't think the board select would need to be here, period. And they're welcome to come.
Well, you can't stop them.
Right. We can't talk them from company.
Except for the fact that it's that they all come, it's considered a. Or a second meeting unless.
It's a chance meeting, though.
It's a chance, meaning if they all, if they discuss the topic amongst them, it's considered a meeting.
Right.
If they don't, if OJ's there and the other two are sitting in the audience, they don't say a thing.
If we do it, if we do it at a. Public. Town. Notified meeting. We can do that, just like we can invite.
Do that against participants.
Citizens.
People, but I don't think you participate. I don't think the two in the audience can look at, but I don't think they do it. So we'd have to ask Jason Dennis that.
We can ask Jason too.
Okay.
So like I said, I have a question about. His. His meeting with the, you know, technical review. Many and his recommendations, and I want to be able to ask them face to face prior to every meeting with the. I don't care when that happens, but I mean. If. OJ is right, South Peak, I think South Peak Master Plan does need update. But if they don't, if they don't want to. If they don't want to. Go through the planning board to get that update, then. They can keep the two thousand and six one as far as I can.
I mean, it kind of indicated that's what they're gonna adhere to. You should call them out if they're not adhering.
Yeah, I mean, and the approvals that they've gotten are supposed to be. In compliance with two thousand and six, which. Fireside is is not. So I mean, it's. There are there are approvals that were given that. That really need to be, I mean, in at the open space, all of that.
Would it be acceptable to do that? By Zoom at our next. Regularly scheduled planning board meeting?
Playing board meeting.
Jason Dennis.
If Jason Dennis wants to be.
Yeah. But do it, do it, do it.
If he wants to be here by Zoom, I've got no problem with that, but sometimes lately the connection has been.
Yeah, I understand, but there's only gonna be one person logged on. Because it's just gonna be him, we're not. I mean, we can have him call in.
I'm just saying, if if you can, it's a waste of our time to be here. If if the technology is not working that night.
Right.
What's the cost of town to get him to come here for a meeting?
Well. His drive.
Probably two hours at three hundred dollars an hour.
Two hours to drive it. You know, plus whatever time he's here.
So probably, you know, at least six hundred bucks just for him to get here.
I don't have hard time with his own, as long as we can talk to him.
And an option with that would be to to see if he can do it at. Say, five o'clock, do a non-public, then we could have a regular meeting at six.
I mean, that's what I was, that's what I thought the discussion was about.
Well, we're we're. Supposing, and we have requested assistance for. Improving it. But we're assuming that it was the bandwidth, because everybody, there were too many people in here on their phones and on their. Uh, laptops when we have meetings here, so. But we don't know for sure that that's the problem.
Well, let's look at it this way. We don't have to have this, this won't be a public, public, open to the public, a public meeting in.
That's why it's a good idea to do it at five o'clock or something.
If for some reason we end up and can't zoom one person in, we'll we'll put him on the speakerphone.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as, as long as the technology works. And he can hear our questions and answer them, that's. It's all that, so he doesn't have to be here.
So we want to. Schedule this September twenty seventh to September thirteenth. I understand we already have a couple things for the thirteenth.
But what if what if five o'clock session with him wouldn't interfere with that, right?
Right, but I I understand, but I'd rather. Do it to have it talked in the same meeting unless. And I.
Talk to him at five o'clock and then have the public, the.
I mean, if you want him present, then he'd have to stay through to six o'clock. And then you have the technology issue, maybe. At the meeting itself.
Okay, I was thinking two separate meetings. I mean, does does it meet your needs to have? Have a non-public with him at five and then start a regular meeting at six? For the South Peak Master Plan?
Actually, I think I'd like, actually, I think I'd like to talk to him. At one meeting and then we can do the master plan at another meeting. If you want to do that, because, you know, just do a non-public some night with him. Um, any night with him at five o'clock, so we can ask the questions about it, so, um, and and then. That will give us, it it would give me time at least to be able to take a look at the master plan, see what he's had to say reviewing before we discuss it all with. With South Peak. Because I mean, there's a lot of questions.
Why don't we have the meeting with the attorney, non-public at five o'clock on the thirteenth? And then have the hearing on the master plan on the twenty seventh.
Oh, that's fine.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so subject to Jason Dennis being available on the thirteenth, yeah.
Yeah, he'll be back on the twentieth.
Okay. Well, Danielle, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that's a good plan.
Right.
So it's five o'clock and people may.
On the thirteenth, I'll make it.
I'll make it. So, uh. Do we need approval from the board to have them do this? I I know anytime you talk to an attorney, it's supposed to be board or Karina approval, so we thought last time that's what we were doing, but. You you can answer that.
I mean, the board's entitled to legal and legal counsel.
The board, right.
I think.
We can. I I mean, honestly, I think if the board set, the board of selectmen said, no. I think Shannon's right. You're right to say, well, we're gonna do it anyway.
I think they'll do, but I don't want, you know, just trying to.
Just.
Okay, I'll just pick up.
Make it work, okay?
If there's an issue, I'll just say, ask.
If if. Can you let Karina know that the board voted this?
Yeah.
And if it's an issue, she can talk to the selectmen.
I'll make a motion that we. Meet on the thirteenth of Jason Dennis in our public session.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, and then a motion to continue the South Peak Revised Master Plan discussion. To September twenty seventh at six P M.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Potential changes to the land use plan ordinance, including concepts and definitions of short term rentals.
Can I comment about the short term rental one?
Yeah.
It seems to be a pretty hot button issue, but. I would think we would, the town would be best served to. Wait till March. And ask the voters in town if they think that there's more regulation needed or necessary for short term rentals. Because we spend a lot of time. And a lot of it. It it. On an ordinance that someone doesn't like, someone doesn't think's right.
How do we ask them?
Huh?
How do we ask them?
Same way we do during any of the other. Um, town meetings where we where we take a poll and ask people at town meeting whether they think that there's that. We could have a public, we could have a public, uh, meeting. And and advertise that that's that, you know, to see what.
To people. Like a, like one of those monkey surveys. It's like a survey and draw up.
But we've done, I mean, something so we don't sit here and and spend a lot of time doing something that maybe nobody wants.
I found that people want details.
Yeah.
We found that with the police station, we had police who voted against the police station because they didn't like where doorways were or hallways were, especially former policemen. They want, they want an absolute plan that they can say yes and no to. If we go and say, well, what do you think about short term rentals? We're gonna just get.
Oh, no, I don't think we ask them. It's a pretty simple question, OJ. Do you think that the town needs more regulation with regards to?
What are the regulations? Can I have it in my neighborhood? Are they gonna be allowing residential or they're gonna be allowing village core?
It's 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 a simple question.
What's the unit? It's gonna be more.
Those are all simple, those are all simple.
Well, let's answer those questions and bring forward a concrete plan and say. Here's an idea. And and we're gonna have public hearings. Hearings to get there, I mean.
I mean, if you ask me personally, I think that. Personally, short term rentals, I don't care. The horse, the horse is on the barn here. I mean, you know, it's just like, it's just like condos, it's like hotels, it's like. I mean, it's like traffic on Main Street. It's like, it's like everything else. I've got a, I've got a right next to me, so that. You know, so. Why should I have mixed me and not somebody else? And so it's. To me, the the horse is off fire here, but.
I mean, too. The only one who's gonna object to the people that live in town, the other people can object, they're not legally voting members. Right, can't affect the town meeting. Like, so locally be the one, locals and natives be the one affecting the results.
Yeah, well, that's what we personally, when we go downtown to the post office and we go down to the bank. Or we go over anywhere around, that's what people complain to us.
But I did talk to people who. For example, I just talked to a guy who bought a house for one point three million dollars. Want me to do some work for him? And because he's got a short term rental thing. I mean, so these are, these are people that don't have a voice in the vote, but there's people who are who are paying taxes. On a lot of places and they they're buying it because they want to be able to short term rent one. You know, I mean, and it's. This thing's been going on since Blue Mountain first started when they, when condos were here and they were renting out to all sorts of people. It just. It's grown with the town, just like everything else, hotels on Main Street that that. South Peak expansion, the, I mean, you know. I don't know.
Well, you know.
That's why I think you ought to ask the board before we.
If no one feels that we should move forward, or wait till Joe gets back, I'll I'll pull the board.
Okay, well, yeah, hold more, but I just thought I'd throw that out.
I mean, for someone who's the one who's in touch with the local people and always bringing their concerns and and a better note, better. Chance to speak. I I'm perplexed, number one.
A second time tonight.
But but you're right. You know, I think that's what we hear. At the board of select meeting, at every event that I go to is is the deliberation. Say this has been going on for years. You know, since Blue Mountain is not true. I mean. It used to be hotels. And condos where people stayed. Almost exclusively, unless they owned a second home and come up and used it and. But but. Now with with half of the downtown. Homes becoming hotel rooms, that's a fairly new concept, you know, last decade. Um, it has changed the character of this town and people are upset about it. Now, listen, I I have no vested interest. I I have Airbnbs, okay? So so I'm not trying to rule out.
You have a tourist house, right?
The houses, and then we have three. Okay, units on a separate lot.
Um, I just thought, you know, I I know. During times at the town meeting prior, we have. Board of Selectmen has polled the voters and said. Do you think we need more of this? Do you think this? Or how do you feel about that? And you you personally have actually spoke about some some of this stuff, you know? And I thought, you know, maybe that's the way to go is to find out. What the consensus is before we put a lot of time in into something that maybe people don't want.
Well, that would put anything that we could enact. A year out till till March of twenty five.
Yeah, well, you know, we. We got a water treatment plant that's been ready for two, three years, you know, so things, things just. A year doesn't, a year doesn't matter. I think finding out whether there's a support for it or not. If people really think that, it is more important. I don't want to waste my time anymore than anybody else.
I think if it was a voted issue, the. Those that are opposed would be outvoted by those. For it, because there's more that are for than opposed.
But he has one that's opposed, one that's opposed, can't vote.
So you don't know, Joe, I mean, I'll look like that. I I can say, hey, the horse is on the barn.
You know, I can tell you, in where I'm at. They come up, they buy a house, change their license plates, and they're never here, so I don't understand how like.
So they can vote. You need it at the condos.
Yeah, but your association could ban short term rentals on their own without anything.
You have to vote down, we could.
See, and that's what I'm saying, so it's.
With the way that the state has it. The way that the state has it written. That we couldn't enforce it and we got voted down, I think it was a short margin, but.
You could vote it down to allow them or to disallow them?
To disallow, yeah, we wanted it like, no, no shorter than thirty days, have to be thirty days or.
Oh, okay, so, so your, your place is all, all allowed.
Yeah.
Short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you could change your bylaws. Vote of the residents.
Vote the, yeah, that's the thing we tried, we tried to do, but it got voted.
Most of the residents over there probably short-term rents, so they're not gonna change those.
I think it was like five years ago.
If you wanna know, let's go for the thing.
It was the biggest meeting we'd ever had.
Twenty years ago. That was Joanne Whitcomb. He was a North Carolina council. He told me those days, that time he forty-five hundred condo rental in town. Rentals and that's quite rental. And it makes twenty years ten, that's, I mean, you really have in town now. Well, as my counter to those rentals. But, like, you can house forty-five thousand people and we can't. There isn't another tax town or, or city in the tax, they may have to do that.
I mean, most of, like you said, it's very few loans, people have, that have come in here have paid. It's, it's sprawl, it's exactly what it is, I mean, people who can afford, come in here and buy. What some, and, and pay what someone wants for a house. At an exorbitant rate compared to what it used to be, and then they turn it into what they want it. Be which is short-term rental or whatever they want. But that's, that's like, that's what happens, people with money can be able to do that, you know?
I think it's, um, that.
I mean, a lot of the local people can. They sell because it's.
Yeah, because there's no.
More money to them, you know, I mean, it's, that's what's happening. Take a look.
I know a lot of people that have left because there's new like feeling of community. In here.
We can start somewhere, so.
Really control the roses, definitely.
Okay, Paul?
I'm not against working on, I'd, would just like to get some direction from the town. You know, whether we do it through a public meet, meeting. And, you know, say, look, we're gonna, the board of selectmen, I mean, what's the planning board is gonna be. Talking about, um, ordinances for short-term rentals, we'd like to invite the public to it. Uh, something, you know, put it out there and, and, and do a real good advertising campaign and, and get. Even, even though you get the people that can vote. Other people could come too, taxpayers could come too, even one of our meetings, you know? And, and, and then, then we could kinda like. See, and if the general consensus is that. There's no problem, then we don't need to spend a bunch of time, but if they say, a lot of people say, yeah, we don't, you know, we really wanna have just one. We wanted you guys, give us some more regulations, then we can work on, you know? It might give us some direction as to what part of the regulation they wanna work on too, is it where they want it to be? Or how many rooms they can have, or how big a house they can, I mean, you know, how many parking spaces they need. Or, you know, because we've heard all sorts of those things, people. Who have homes and. The people next to them don't, don't like all the parking spaces, so maybe they want bigger lots for those type of things, but at least. We can hear what their concerns are. And, and, and do it through a public hearing. Type of thing first. I would think that's, yeah, that's my.
Joe?
There are a lot of people approached me, even some realtors. Like to have us do this. From here up the fallen roads at Big Square. The limit amount of. Short-term, uh, turning of their B N Bs, is raised way beyond the whole downtown. Population.
It does, it does a lot.
But the thing is, we can't control it. We should be able to, but we can't, in federal, in federal guidelines for discrimination and others.
That's not, so you, you saying we can't regulate short-term rentals?
No, we can't, could tell people we can't buy a place. At certain areas, but we can regulate how they're gonna do short-term rentals. We can make sure they're very stringent on the amount of parking they have. Robinian mobile, snowmobile, that would tone it down with that, a lot of places can't beat it. So you go to, go to School Street. The house is aborted on, on college.
But, but what you're saying, Joe, is everyone that has, wants to have a short-term rental, we have to come into cycling review.
You can make it a regulation, to make the regulation thing.
We have seven hundred. Eleven short-term rentals in Lincoln that have been identified, so. That's a lot of meetings.
Should it be like for that, for like residential homes? Not.
So let's, you know, why don't we pull the board, we're talking about whether or not we're gonna talk about short-term rentals, so. Those that feel this is something the board should discuss, raise your great hand. Two. Those that feel this is something the board doesn't need to get involved in, raise your hand. Type, okay. So. Three noes, two yeses. Okay.
Said the only way I'd be. Anybody would have figured to control certain areas.
If we have the right to do that, we have the right to allow it in certain zones, like, like, you know, Village Four, hotels. The whole mountain district with this.
A main church and school streets, it's three houses, so it is.
Yeah, and we're saying that we wanna just let that, that continue. And the townspeople, like clearly said they don't like. And the planning board is saying, we don't, we don't even care enough to take the time, you know, and all the time, you build a board of selectmen, do your job. We don't need, we don't need to go here in public. First of all, the people who are gonna vote at the town meeting on this issue, they're gonna come during the day and vote, they're not the, just the few people who come at night, they're the. They're the hundreds who show up during the day to vote on an ordinance like this. To get the opinion of the last sixty people who hang out for the whole town meeting is not a good sampling of this. We could go through and, and, and create some sort of guideline or something and then have public hearings and develop something that the town. I- i- is saying that they want in time for next March's meeting, and we're denying. This town that, that chance to do that, we're putting that off for at least another year. It's shameful. It's shameful.
Property in New Hampshire.
The other thing we could do, but question is. We do a class three mailing at the post office, which is much cheaper than the first, like, class. Question, everybody's on a tax roll. But they, when they put on, they have to say, you're a full-time resident or part-time resident, here's an idea, which one to form, which one to get.
We don't even know, we're gonna ask them though, I mean, that's, that's, we're not even gonna talk about it.
We're gonna listen. If we decide to go that way, I mean, that, that's all the ways we could go, so, I mean, it's not just do at the town meeting. That was one option I gave you, the other option was we could do it here, but.
But you, we just voted, so we're not even gonna discuss it, so. When, right, we're done?
That, that's, that's what we voted on, yeah.
So everyone comfortable with their vote?
Yeah.
I mean, we're not really taking any public, we're not talking about it.
Can, can you ask who iPhone?
Yeah, sure, I, iPhone ten, can you identify yourself for the record, please?
They don't wanna be identified.
Yeah, I'm discouraged, I just.
They go out to the pair.
Okay. So I guess. Take your information home. Look it over. Read that over, you wanna decide you wanna talk about it again, that's fine. Discussion of a definition for multifamily housing. Reason I think we need to take a look at it, but now we have the restricted multifamily. You know, basically deals with lot coverage. See definitions eighteen and twenty-three. Multifamily dwelling, a structure, a combination of structures on a single parcel of land containing three or more housing units. Whether for rental, condominium ownership, or other form of occupancy. So that suggests you put three houses on a single lot, with that definition. So I propose that we. Describe it as a single building containing three or more separate housing units.
Where are you getting your synchronism from, Carol?
So, my definition is on page twenty at land use plan ordinance.
Yeah, on Carol's redline version, the original, what, what it says. In what Jim is proposing, the both side by side, Jim's proposal and Red.
Multifamily dwellings. That's talking about?
Yes.
I mean, a tweet, it said, you know. Deficiencies for residential use, but we're just trying to. Defining a, uh, restricted multifamily as a business use.
So, you're really just talking about. The separate. Considering them as separate housing units, where. In twenty-nine, it does contain three or more housing units, you wanna get the word separate in it.
Well, I, I want, I, I propose three units being one building. Not three buildings.
So then, shouldn't you say like? A single building containing three? That way there, it is, it can't be confused with. Anything else. A single structure, a single building.
I mean, when it's written, you can't have two lots, two, two of them on a lot, but you can have three, so it makes no sense to me, but.
Not without it being the same structure.
Sorry?
Not without it being the same structure.
Right. Can't be three, couldn't be, under this definition, it can be three separate structures.
Right now, I got one as well as to have another. Structure after the first one.
Well, that wouldn't affect. That's a detached in-law apartment.
Well, if it has like the same roof, I mean, if it's all under the same roof.
That would make it a single building.
Right, right, but then that would be a single, I mean, it doesn't say.
I mean, we.
Well, what if you just put, you know, on the, one that's already there, a single structure. For us out, or a combination of structures. So a single structure on a single parcel of land containing three or more housing units. Whether for rental, condominium, or general, or occupants.
Happened to work too.
Yeah, just take your words and put them in, and, yeah. So a single structure. There's one thing you might they have, or a.
On a single.
On a single parcel of land?
Single structure. On a single parcel of land. Like, or a combination of structures. On single parcel, anything for more than, for the rental. Okay, yeah.
And then if we do that, can we change housing units to dwelling units, because we don't have a definition of what a housing unit is?
Do we have definition dwelling then?
Well, where is that? It's proposed, it's in, it's on the previous page.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see that, yeah.
Didn't know what you wanted to do first.
Yeah, this came from.
So, yeah, let's say that.
You know, he was, he was trying to step away as to, you know, what he might be able to do. And that was one.
Should we say?
He's founded Portsmouth, you know, it's part of the Portsmouth. Or, that's why I put Portsmouth there.
And that dwelling unit, should that include something that says? For one or more. Related persons, I mean, if they're unrelated, it becomes a.
Well, can't really do it, can't really do it based on familial status.
We can't.
Right, you can't.
Because it's, because I thought we had something in our, um. Ordinances for boarding houses.
We took, we took that language out because it's discriminatory, it discriminates based on.
What do we replace it with for boarding?
Let me realize that the trip you were doing in Gulf of Bill. You know that, okay? What street? Who could have known the Gulf of Bill? They have, they have boarding house, they have rentals in the basement. When the mill was running years ago, they call it Gulf of Mill, Gulf of Bill, because half the people living in the basements. Like golfers.
Did these people grow tails and hail at golfers?
I didn't, I didn't date any of them, I don't know.
As a boarding example, twenty-seven.
Boarding a rooming house, item seven in page eighteen.
Building.
I don't think multi-unit has to do with owner occupation.
I need the dwelling one, should we? We put less on maximum number of persons.
Well, we don't regulate the size of a single-family house.
Is that?
We don't regulate the size of the house.
That's the law that it's built on.
I suppose that's regulated by the amount of parking they have and everything else in that, right?
I mean, right now, you have. Seven or eight, seven or eight bedrooms, the lot, lot is so far, so that's. Sixteen, eighteen people in one dwelling.
And they will have to park it to meet that.
They have to park it to meet that. I mean, also, lot coverage, but it's unlikely they cover. You know, they. See the maximum lot coverage of a single family.
I'm, I'm changing that, John, on, on the multifamily dwelling units, so. You, you said you wanted. Put dwelling unit in there instead of.
Housing, housing unit, just this housing unit isn't defined.
Right. So take out housing unit, okay, I'll.
We put in dwell.
Right. Wait, Carol.
Wait till Carol gets back.
The other night, what occurred. We, we, we took it off our order sheet some years ago. We, we're adding a, one, you own the land under the building. The other, you don't, you only own the building on top of the land. If that is any way we could.
So is everybody okay with changing that?
Okay, tell me what you're changing, so we haven't made any changes to dwelling unit, I think we're gonna.
Where it says multifamily dwelling. Which is what Jimmy wanted to talk about first. Where it says a single structure. Um, a single structure on a single parcel of land containing three or more instead of housing units, it'll say. It'll, it'll say dwelling units.
Okay.
Right?
Where it's written now, in China, it's written to be, if you have five acres of land, you're going against the parameter.
No, it doesn't.
For dwelling?
That just defines a multifamily. Five acres, five acres of land, you can put, if it's a lot in the zone, you can put a restricted multifamily.
But without subdividing.
Without subdividing.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I mean. Right, that's like, sworn across the street, that's a restricted multifamily.
Right, so, should we? Where it says, the issue some, under dwelling here, where it says, this issue shall not be deemed to include such transient. Occupancies. As hotels, motels, rooming, board, boarding house. Should it also? Is a short-term rental considered a transient occup, occupancy?
We're good with, with those two? What's your question, Paul?
Should, should, under dwelling unit, should it say? Where it says, deemed to include such transient occupancies as hotels, motels, rooming, and boarding house, should it say for short-term rentals?
I mean, we're really describing a type of building. Um, short-term rentals as a use, so I don't think. We need to put anything in there.
A short-term rental, I mean, a transient occupancy. Is the definition of a short-term rental, so I, I mean, I think it already includes it.
You think it already includes it in there, all right, you don't think you ought to say it?
I, I mean, we're, we're, we're not adding a definition of the short-term rental, we're not adding any restrictions to it, we're not talking about it, so.
Yeah.
I don't know what the point.
That's fine. That's fine, I'm all right with that, we'll leave it the way it is.
Moving on to C.
So wait, just go back to that, we're, we're crossing out from the word Portsmouth.
Oh, right, okay.
Crossing out the word Portsmouth?
Yeah, that was just to tell you where the.
Right, just wanna make sure we, we get that out again.
Ready to move on? Usable land and its relationship to floodplain and other challenges to help.
Okay, if you want them.
We're right now, I'm on the reading from the agenda.
Okay, so.
Goodbye.
So we already had the definition, so just so you know, uh, we already had the definition, Jason. Felt that the court would support us using it the way it is in the land use plan ordinance, but. Would be better if it were elsewhere.
So use of the space has been added on your sixty-three on page twenty-three. This is just cotton copy for another part?
Cotton copy for a different section of the ordinance already. And then, um, terms of where to put it in a more obvious place, so that anybody who is developing can find it. Um, that's when you turn to page thirty-five, thirty-six. And that just comes right from the same place that we got the definition.
So.
It's just includes all the other elements that you're supposed to, that the landlord is supposed to review. And granting either a subdivision or safe plan review approval. Uh, which you already have in the ordinance, but you have it in a weird place, you have it in the special exception.
So my question will be under number three. I covered by well, water bodies, water shit, drainage system. As defined by an empty level for that. Does that include stormwater protection systems? Because stormwater protection systems are not usable space. I mean, if you take a look at the subsurface systems that they, they're putting in, depending on whether it's a hotel or. Whatever it is, tho- those can be pretty big.
A lot of money ground though.
Right, but you can't build on top of, so they're not usable spaces. It shouldn't, you shouldn't build on top of, it, it shouldn't be.
Can't, you can't build. I mean, it won't support the weight of the buildings.
Structurally, you can, oh, yeah, we can put three, I'm telling you, I put one in now. Put three feet of bill over top of it and put a hard surface on top of it, you can build over top of those things, they have inspection ports, they have access. You can do that, but. This would just preclude somebody from considering stormwater protection areas as usable space. Cause it's, to me, that should be set aside.
Cause we had one up to, uh, Ramshorn three years ago. Built over the stream, Boil Brook, we did so, had to look at a lot of paperwork, D V S, do it. And now it's great.
And is, and, and would usable space be considered as part of the? Aggregate when you're figuring out?
No. No, that's the, the whole.
Right.
That's the way your ordinance is written right now. You can find it in that, in that ridiculous place that.
I mean, this is just for clarity.
I understand that, but that's what I'm saying, stormwater protection areas should not be considered part of an aggregate that someone uses for, for lot coverage.
Well, if you look at page thirty-six, okay, this is the rest of that section. So the slide shall be suitable for proposed use structure development starts on page thirty-five. Okay. Okay, see the red, okay, the red, number four.
Yeah.
All the way down to, it's just worded slightly different, so that it's, I mean, it's, it's almost identical to the place with the special exceptions. So then the. One is adequate usable space, part two is adequate access. Part three is absence of environmental constraints, so then a proposed development for project area, including but not limited to. And a lot of the stuff is the same, but it's not identical. You know, floodplain, shoreland protection district, wetlands, water bodies, watersheds, and proposed drainage systems. Stormwater management, erosion control, and steep slopes.
So under four, uh, under adequate access. That's up page thirty-six C, uh, D, it does say stormwater management, erosion control.
Right. And like I said, it's already in your ordinance, just in a weird place. Very fine.
So that's the definition, we have a definition of usable space, and this is saying. Page thirty-five is talking about the lot coverage requirements.
Lot and lot coverage requirements and standards. And it includes, now, um, originally, we had just A, B, C, D, and E over here. And so when, when Ray and I were discussing this today, um.
So we're gonna, we're gonna take adequate usable space out of, uh, lot and lot coverage requirements and standards. I'm gonna take it from there and put it right in definitions.
No, it is in the definitions, but this is more than what's in the definition. The definition is just this first part.
So I mean, we're gonna take the first part out, adequate usable space, then, so we're gonna take the definition of usable space, A, B. A and B out, put that in the definitions.
Well, what Ray.
I mean, we're not gonna duplicate is what I'm asking.
Well, I think that that's what they thought they were saving space when they put it in the special exception part. But that's why nobody could find it. Okay, so. So this puts it right up front, and we would have Jason Dennis look at it, and Jason Dennis might suggest that. Uh, we don't have to put it in the definitions, or we should just leave it here, or he might suggest that we need it put in both places.
I would think that we could put. Just leave usable space an A. There, and then under B. Forget what it excludes and just say that usable space. Is defined. Under law coverage requirements and standards. Just refer it to the law coverage requirements and standards, cause that tells you everything that you, everything that it doesn't do, you know what I mean?
That's a good suggestion, but what I'm just saying is that maybe we should ask Jason Dennis what would work best for us, to support us. But it makes sense to put it in both places, just one place in my end.
But I think what Jimmy's saying, if I'm not mistaken, is that, so then we have one, two, three, and four, but. Then, as you say on page thirty-five, we really have. What adequate usable space is, I mean, it gets more than one, two, three, four, or five, it could give a lot.
Also, the rest of the criteria.
But by referring the definition to. What law coverage requirements is, it, it tells you that it has to meet all the requirements of law coverage. You know what I mean, it, it, it's, it's not just this, they'll say, well, how come this? Doesn't include all of page thirty-five and thirty-six.
Cause it's just a definition of usable space, that's adequate usable space. So then the question is, is it adequate usable space, or is it just usable space?
Why don't you just put as an addendum on each section, each section, section that, pretty traditional information. I mean, it could be all, people see it once, so they can know where to look for it. It's starting scanning through the, the ordinances. See here, see yours probably went to that, let me see that, the other part, the other part says this, but it didn't show it under, when I looked at it. Looked at the pattern. If you could put it to reference. This article is reference, article thirty, page thirty-six. Now, this article thirty-six is off, very, very. Reference it on page twenty-three, whatever.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be able to reference page numbers, cause they change all the time.
Change the ordinance.
Every time we.
I still think you can. The usable base. Is more clearly defined under law coverage requirements and standards.
Can you, can you put that just for note, in, in your conversation with Jason Dennis, say that some board members were thinking to. Use that language to refer it to a certain, again, not, but the section. And, and tell him what our question was. And ask, should we, should we fully explain it like we have in this red line version, or can we just say C section four?
Rather just reference, but anyway, just ask a question.
Yeah, let him. Way in on that.
I'm all right with that.
Thirty-six is all in red, but I'm assuming that's gonna stay where it is.
Yeah, I had one question with that. On page thirty-six. Triplets are confusing, because if you're reading down, B comes first, and then A comes second.
The computer renumbered.
Okay, just. But under the second section, which is called A.
C, should be C.
Oh, got it, okay, that should be C. Where's A?
That should be D, A, B is on.
B is on page thirty-six, C is on page thirty-six.
A is on thirty-five, B is on thirty-five. Currently, and B is on thirty-six.
Has to be renumbered.
I got it.
All I did was cut and paste, and then it.
Under, under what should be C. One says the proposed use structure or development is architecturally compatible with the surrounding residential district. Everywhere else, it just says the neighborhood of the district, because it might not be a residential district.
Where, where, where are you?
Under, what should we see?
Where you got? See, on page thirty-six, right?
Rule one.
C is on page thirty-six.
Okay, I see it, I.
Yeah.
Okay, say it again, what you wanna do?
Well, it says she'll be compatible with the surrounding residential district, what if the surrounding district is not residential, does that mean this doesn't apply?
That will be D. That's good change, okay, I see.
Should it be just the surrounding district?
The surrounding district. If you go to the next one, it talks about, they'll not disturb the tranquility of the district, whether it's residential, general use.
Right.
Okay?
Those are more. Those seem to me to be more zoning board requirements than they are planning board requirements, but the planning board criteria. Are the proposed use structure, wh- when you're voting on it, and you're going into voting mode. It, you, you discuss whether proposed use structure development will not disturb tranquility, or whether they will be compatible with the surrounding district. So those, if, if you look under the zoning board.
Yeah, that's the requirements for variance.
Right.
Right.
They can still be requirements for a, a cycle.
We're gonna use the same, same requirements.
Exactly the same.
Because if somebody comes to you for a special exception, that means they wanna bend the rules. And so they're gonna also look to see, is this bending of the rules still gonna be okay? Because it is architecturally compatible with the surrounding district. And both the planning board can think about that, but the overall plan without bending any of this. C V A is looking at bending and breaking rules, and does it still, even though we bend or break these rules, can, you know, does this, is it still?
What I like to notice.
Architecturally compatible and tranquil.
So basically, it says the architectural standard never changes in a district. Cause every time, every time you build something, it has to look like they won't build.
I like the hardship they have that they're, that they ask. Some of this.
They don't have to ask a hardship.
For variance.
For variance. We're talking about site plan.
And this comes out as special exception, special exceptions are things that are allowed. But they have to take into consideration a few additional things, and this is some of the additional things that they take into consideration. Architectural compatibility, tranquility. Non-incompatible or undesirable in relation to the existing uses in the area.
Well, we've, we've had questions about that lately. When we were talking about, what was it, this building over here? And off, off the hotel, we were talking about whether they were architecturally compatible, Carol always said that the town does have.
Second review regulations is part of it.
Right.
Right, you said that, so that leads more into that.
Right.
Another ten years, nobody need for it, be all looking like downtown Boston.
Gonna look, gonna look like a shipyard if you get those.
Run another story. Okay, yeah, there are new rules in Ritzville, that's why we have Walmart, yeah. Ocean State job law. It's a hopping place over there, Ritzville, Manhattan.
We have a lot of people crushing. Let's move, let's move on. Um, is everyone good with usable land?
Yep, so that color thirty-five and thirty-six, right?
Yeah.
The thirty-seven is also part of it, right?
And then thirty-seven was, was the end of it.
The end of it, right.
But, but then there's, there, um, was sort of a, you'd already addressed in the lot coverage, you know, year-round stream and water bodies. So it made sense to say that there is usable space shall be. Uh, included in determining compliance with the minimum lot size on each section.
Open space or green space?
I would like to put it in.
No, I didn't put that in there, so you didn't, you know, China, many people calling to the.
On page thirty-seven, four point five. It says only there is usable space. And I think that we should say where that is defined at, where there is, as defined in law coverage requirements and standards. So that, that's the criteria that you use.
So this is, this is that section.
Well, it's at the four point five, it's the same, with four point five, same as. So it's still part of.
It, it should be part of four.
Okay.
So the numbering is.
All right, all right.
There's a number, so we'll, we'll fix the numbers so it's uniform.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine, I just wanna make sure that they understand that. Everybody does, understands that that definition of use of space is that. Meant that, that's a big change compared to what we currently have, right? Usable space.
We just never could find it, because it was in the special exception where, way at the end of the ordinance. And on it, if you were looking at an index, if you were a developer, or somebody wanted to know what you could or couldn't do. Couldn't, you wouldn't think to look there, you just wouldn't.
Open space or green space?
No, I didn't do that, no, I didn't get that. The page thirty-nine, that's all crossed out, and then I'm paying forty-one. Any difference there, and what? Is this not part of this, or? I just didn't know what, what this was.
No, I just moved the location. See, it was, the, the ones that's crossed out is before the accessory building.
She just. She sort of reads like, it discusses accessory building setback requirements.
Right.
And then dimensional chart is right, gonna be right next to it.
Correct.
Okay.
And so it's just in the back, it's just, you know, that chart.
So. We should also be discussing, if we're discussing this, we should be discussing some of OJ's recommended changes that he had.
Well, not on for that, we can stay though.
But that.
We're moving on, other, other, um, we're gonna move to that.
I, I don't, I didn't bring notes, so I didn't.
Any other?
Cause he, I know some of OJ's things he had, for example, with. The maximum height structure as well, that they. The maximum height of structure as well, that they could be changed depending upon. Whether they're spreadable, whether.
Right, and we we can talk about that. Whenever.
I mean, if we're if if we're talking about this, then we ought to talk about those same, those items as well. To see whether or not any of them. Want to be changed at this time.
Yep, that's, we're gonna get get to that, it says. Discussion regarding other possible changes to land use ordinance, so.
Cause I didn't bring any of that.
Well, I couldn't find it, cause they.
We got one more thing to talk about anyway.
Can't find any, so.
Can we talk about?
So they don't have open space or green space, we don't have that done yet.
No.
Okay, we'll put that on for another meeting. Alright, discussion regarding whether approvals can be rescinded.
I think somebody asked me to put that on the agenda, so.
I mean, I guess they. If they're in violation of their approval, yeah, it can be rescinded, but.
Most of the time when we give them, when the planning board gives an approval, we say as long as it is in compliance with. Rules and regulations of the town. And I think there's something else that we say about that. And I'll use the. I'll use fireside, for example, we gave that approval. Kind of jumped the gun, gave, you know, went went through all that, and that was a. A multi number of errors, but. It doesn't meet. With the. Master plan requirements, it doesn't, it doesn't comply with the green space requirements. And that there's a lot of things that, I mean, those two things in general, it doesn't comply with. So even though we gave an approval. It's not that you're retracting it, you just can't give. You can't give a permit for it to be constructed because. Those things don't comply with the. The rules and regulations. That's what I, what I would say, you're not gonna rescind it, you're just gonna say, it either you found out through the process that it doesn't comply, or it does comply and. Then they then they get the permit, but.
Okay, well, they're they're under the impression that they're entitled for permits, so if you're gonna tell them no, you're basically rescinding.
I don't think you rescind it, but they're they're not entitled to any, Jimmy, they're not entitled to anything until they. They comply with the rules and regulations, then they're entitled to it, there's a, there's steps to go, you know? And it's not just up big, I mean, it it would be anybody. Uh, the guy up on the highway that. That did that garage, I mean, you know, you're not entitled to a permit to build until you comply with. The rules and regulations, the guy who built the garage, it was over the property line down, I think down there. You you know, you have to comply with the rules and regulations before you're entitled to that permit. Just cause the planning board gives you, you know, says they don't have your permit, you still gotta make sure that before the permit's given.
So, okay, so I guess we're gonna talk with the town attorney, we got. Master plans on the thirteenth, I would suggest you save your questions.
That's fine. We can talk to him about that too, that's fine.
Anyone else have any other thoughts?
I mean, and that's the same as. That's the same as when you get a permit, wh- when you get a permit, if you don't have all your approval vice versa, so you get a permit. And then you go out, you do something, and you don't have your approval, whether it's a. Uh, stormwater. EPA wash plot, I mean, drinking water sewer, I if you don't have any of that. Your permit should be. Not avoided until you get that.
So that's, you know, that's just discussion for the thirteenth, I think. Get your questions in order. Right, does anyone else have anything from that?
Well, I'm wondering, I'm wondering, um. If you have questions, if. If we could let Jason Dennis know what the general area is so that he can prepare somewhat.
Well, why don't we make some of the list tonight, so you can tell him?
Why don't we get him, get him Carol by September sixth, I'll give him a week to research it.
Alright, I'll get you my questions.
Okay, so emailing questions to Carol by by the sixth, you'll get them off the attorney.
By September sixth.
Oh, no, the thirteenth is when we're. Gonna discuss it, so by the sixth we will. Right.
I mean, it'll make for a more efficient meeting too.
Yeah, cause I mean, we could ask him something, and he'll say, oh, I'm gonna research it.
Right.
You know, although some stuff I'll tell him said, but. If we give him a heads up about the area, we wanna know.
Other possible changes, so I guess OJ presented a list, we can discuss. If there's anything on there, we wanna talk about it at a future meeting.
Yeah, we should bring that with us, so we can, I I don't have.
Well, can, do you have? Yeah, this one, is this one that you gave us?
Yeah, probably. Um, here, I disappeared, here, I got, I got some problems. Can we go back to the green on page forty one? Under eight, B, Roman numeral two. It says there shall be no more than four floors used as living space above or below ground level as measured through any vertical plane of the building. What is a living space?
Finished and heated.
Is it?
Is this a? Another trick question, so I guess we need, so we need to define living spaces, which is getting now.
You change it to habitable space, what if it's not habitable?
Right, what if you storage?
Yeah, so so I have. Three stories of parking garage, one story of basement cellar, storage. Four stories on top of that. So now I have an eight story building, but there's only four livable. And my primary eve is less than thirty five feet because I'm building it on a slope, I'm gonna measure from this side. Or is it on this side?
We did that once with the mountain club.
You did that all over town.
Take out the living space.
We're done with the variance. That's always ran a tumor. You wouldn't hear without. Most of most of here were.
Okay, but those four floors above ground or below ground, I mean, does my base, does the basement count as floor?
There shall be no more than four floors used as. Four floors, and I would propose that we take a living space. Above or below ground level measured through the vertical plane of the bill.
Okay.
You only have four floors, that's it, doesn't matter whether you use them for storage, bathroom, or parking lot, uh, you have four floors.
Age, cause if you have a building with a basement, it can only be three stories high.
It it can only be, right.
I'm not saying yes or no.
No, I I'm saying it's four floors, period. And they can't exceed the thirty five feet, so it's four floors with thirty five feet, that's that's the requirement that you have to meet. That's pretty simple.
Can I park us on top of the fourth floor?
It 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 would be considered a floor, cause you're using it. It's a floor.
Okay, well, if I put my AC units on the roof, I'm using that as a floor.
But that, then AC unit is different than a parking a car.
AC unit is part of the structure of building.
Right.
A car parking lot is not.
It's not.
It's. Usable space, it's not livable space, it's not habitable, it's not heated.
I think.
It's not enclosed.
Simple, keep it simple.
Keep it simple, someone's gonna drive a truck through it, they'll find a loophole.
Well, yeah, but it, they can, if they say, look, you got four floors and it can, it's thirty five feet of primaries.
How about if we just? No more than four floors above. Ground level.
Oh, because what happens is. Then they go below ground.
And they're gonna have three, three stories below, right?
Living space. It says there shall be no more than four floors above or below ground level as measured through any vertical plane.
That's a pit barrier. And then the, the true criteria you have for that and the thirty five feet, and that's it.
Cause some places. You're you're allowing a lot of coverage, if you don't have parking on the ground. Don't be even putting three stories. Some of the people on the board. Saw this great idea when the guy next door wanted to do it, remember?
Rock was a great idea, which. There's nothing really to say couldn't.
Well, yeah, all he did was he built a piece of wall.
Well.
Instead of. I'm counting thirty five feet from the top of the wall.
But that was all, that was all part parcel to. When we didn't have a ladder truck and how far the ladder truck could reach, and that's where we got into the thirty five feet.
I think that's true, but I think some people. You know, the check to high buildings.
Oh, no, 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 but I mean, it originally started because of the. The ability of the town to be able to get up above that.
That's why the mountain club of Loon, the backside about twenty five feet higher than the front side on the ground. They get around the ordinance, puts that history there, remember?
I gotta tell you, I still think. Keep that simple. Four floors is enough, we've got a, we've got a volunteer fire department, I mean, you know, it's. If you start going down below, you start going.
Brian, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I'd love to, if I could, I just. Parking particularly, I think the board should be doing everything they can to incentivize parking, I hear about you guys talking about it. Every, any approval you do. And to include an underground parking structure. As part of this regulation, we kind of, you know, someone wants to build a four story hotel or whatever. And they say, I'm gonna solve the town, my parking problems to meet the town's regulations by going underground. You shouldn't. You shouldn't go, well, I got three stories underground, so they can only have one above ground, but four story total limit, so. I just ask you to consider that.
Well, I guess they could always go for variance in that case.
Yeah, they could go for variance, Brian, and then get almost. Anything they want at that point, I mean, if if they really wanted to put four stories of parking down below. I mean, there's a lot of engineering that would have to go with it, but they. Yeah, I mean, they would have the. Four stories down below would be a lot, and especially with the fire safety codes and life safety codes would be incredible.
A lot of engineering to that.
Yeah, and and variance is a special exceptions, that's what those things are made for.
Here's the end, we tried to put a proposal in, it'd be so many feedback. From one twelve, with three, many billion, but it'll bump so many stories. Did I get thrown about, now we get four and a half story buildings up and down Main Street.
We have one.
Well, this building can be same height as the one that Shackle on Hall. Right behind it.
That's, well, that's pending application, so.
I mean, not, I mean, like, at at Loon, for example, in the main parking lot, you could put. Four stories of parking in that main parking lot.
You know, and here's, here's my thought on that, cause I also talked about allowing structure height more than thirty five feet. I think the point I wanted to bring to the planning board to discuss is. Now, I guess, just in my opinion. A, a. Seven story building. On Main Street. Where there's a three underground. Levels of parking and your four story structure, um, to me is a lot different. Than say, a, that same structure set. A quarter mile back from Main Street on either side, so I'm not just talking about Loon Mountain, there's there's places over at at at, um. Forest Ridge that have been pre improved for X number of units. That that begin on their original plan was was. Small or whatever, two, two, three unit condos, all over the hillside. Would it be in the town's best interest if the developer wanted to, obviously we can't tell them what to do. But made provision where they could build a, a smaller footprint that perhaps includes. Two, two or three underground parking units with a taller unit than thirty five feet. Up against a hillside, where when you're looking out, you won't even see it. Um, would that make more sense than covering? You know, three times as much ground space with with units. At a place like that, it, do we wanna allow any flexibility in our? Ordinance to look at those without, without making them go through hardship, because again. Money isn't the hardship. But but would 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 the town rather see? A tighter, smaller building on a hillside where you can't see it from Main Street. Versus a whole bunch of smaller units spread out and taking up more green space. It it puts that further back, as opposed to, you know. Putting something next door, ten feet or across the street there, what if he came in? With a seven story thing, right, at the edge of Main Street, that's what, ten feet back?
Right.
I I think that's a lot different than something that's a quarter mile off.
But I think we can, I think we could accomplish the same thing. By having. A more definitive. Green space requirement. In other words, you know, you you need to have a certain amount of green space for whatever size building you have. That's gonna get us back to more green space and a more. Friendly or.
We have a green space requirement just based on lot coverage, that's what that lot coverage, yeah, we did reduce.
I know, but we need to, I think we need to look at that a little more, I mean, I can remember when. Subway came in and, um. Tom Adams. Was here. And they had the old green space ahead, the head was that old green space out, they had a fence there, and there was a couple, he made him put in a couple of trees. Well, within not too many years, green space was gone and the trees were gone. And that's happened all over, you take looks like up at the mountain, all those trees. And there there's been trees and and other developments that have been cut and not put back.
Well, that's a violation of the site plan.
Well, I know, but what I'm correct, but what I'm saying is we need, we should. I think that. If we're not careful. What we're gonna do is, there'll be no green space in town. In the downtown area, and and I, I think that would be a shame.
Downtown area agree with you, but what the paraphrase OJ was saying. If you put these units into the, into the building, the building into the mountain. The lawn, you can hack this on the backside if you had to. Which create less coverage of the primary or property.
But it will be.
There'll be more green space, no space, but the building will be a bit of a test and cover the whole lot site.
But you just talk about things that look like Boston Joe, so what you're then gonna do is take bigger, bigger buildings. Taller buildings instead of bigger buildings, so you're gonna start going up instead of out.
I think we leave it like.
Built into the mountain, you wouldn't notice that. I'm trying to say.
Well, you would have been six or eight stories, no matter what it is. You don't have any mountains, you could build a six way building.
I think, I think Danielle had wanted to make.
Yeah, I just, I think we should just leave it, the thirty five feet and then cross out doors. Used as living space, and then they can come in with variance. As as was proposed.
I think that's probably the simplest way.
Yeah, I mean, works.
I mean, there aren't too many instances we're gonna have a chance to build into a mountain side.
No.
There aren't many instances where you're gonna be a quarter mile off of Main Street.
Well. I mean, when we did try to make another. Access off Main Street behind. Behind the like where the pharmacy is and stuff like that, Mark Rest was trying to create that path to back. Nothing's ever come of that.
Yeah, there was a lot of resistance to doing that, there were some people thinking it's a good idea.
Yeah, but I mean, it it was, I mean, it was, it was always there just in case we wanted to have it, yeah.
Didn't Conway do that with the east west road there that runs behind?
That works pretty well. I gotta tell you, my wife and I go over there, she's always hollering at me, use the other road, you'll get there a lot faster and better, you know? And on on the occasion that I do.
Just that it used to be, people finding out about it is.
Works pretty well.
They did, Conway, they were saying about the bike path, it's up and down.
What's that?
So so, right, can we? Move on with this? Alright, i- if we then for ourselves use this living space as the definition of the environment of four floors. Do we want to allow the planning board? Any? Flexibility. In underground parking?
I think so.
Think we should.
I mean, I do too, I think we should, we should do it, but. But but. Specifically include something that says we're counting four floors. Okay, is your standard, and if you wanna do underground parking, there should be some.
I don't want, yeah, I wanna, I don't want to say gee.
Like, cause the like it thing.
Yeah.
Drives me crazy, some people, I don't like that, well, you can't just vote against it, you don't like it. Does it meet the criteria of the ordinance? And and I wonder if that criteria would include, um.
Could we put the visible story or visible stories?
Well, no, I would say the thing, what if we said something like the planning board has, uh, uh. Allow more than four stories. Would if the additional stories are. You know, a hundred percent used for. You know, a hundred percent used for parking purposes. Um. Not, not visible, uh, not used in a building within X feet of Main Street. Which means those, those taller buildings. That's what I'm saying, we don't wanna do that. Yeah, I mean, we can, I, I say, I don't wanna do that. That's my opinion. Why can't we?
I think if you could do it, if. Someone will go to Paul's point, you can have a couple underground. Floors for parking if you increase your green space, some trade-off like that. Not a bad idea.
But I would like to look at, I think you ought to limit it. So like. Two levels below ground, so that somebody else might want six. I think six is a. I mean, you, you have to put some limit on it.
Hold on, I wonder.
Cause it just seems to be limits. If, if you don't put a limit on it, someone will come up with it, you know?
What's, what's the, uh? Uh, uh, financially feasible limits underground? I mean, obviously you get down to twelve stories.
The way money, the way money flows around, you know, you never, someone could do that, you know, I just.
I can tell you what a parking spot costs if you want to know.
Sure.
Back to your hotel.
Underground, yeah.
That's. Anywhere between sixty-five and eighty thousand dollars a parking spot.
Right, okay, and down to how, what level?
It probably gets more expensive as you.
You're right.
It gets more expensive. It's not necessarily the concrete.
It has to.
It's a life by safety, so.
Yeah.
I don't.
I mean, you're gonna have park, hotels and Lincoln bookings in China, basically.
It will be, whoa, when you did, when, when we did the annexed building in Loom. That underground parking there, that was, that was expensive.
Yeah. It's not, Cal has something to say.
Uh, before I forget, um, A two is the same language, you know, they have, you have two different height, um, measures and this one. The eight A Roman two, small Roman two. It also says used as living space, so if you wanna get rid of the one in. B two, you should get rid of the one in A two.
I would agree, but I do like the, I, I do like what Jimmy said about. If, if you wanna go more than the four, that'd be tied to green space. Because then, you know, then there's a.
Less density, you appreciate density too.
Maybe more green space, I mean, it, it, I've never thought would, I would say that living in Lincoln and Hampshire, but. And certain, and certain spots in town, we need more green space.
Can have up to, I don't know, two levels of underground parking. If you keep your lock coverage fifteen percent. Below the max.
And, and related to the law coverage, that would work.
Something like that.
That would work, and I think it needs to be in an area, the green space doesn't need to be, say. At Loon Mount with this, a, a ton of green space, but it may be.
I mean, there's a ton of green space around town, ninety percent of it is national forest.
Right, but I mean, you, you don't see any directly in the business proper in town. You know, so that to me is where we.
Should, should, in the, I'm not disagree, but in question, should the, instead of saying, you know, you have to this much more green space. Would it be, uh? More relevant to say this much less lock coverage? Cause if all of the, our regulations are seventy percent lock coverage, eighty percent.
Well, that's what I said, some metric, below maximum lock coverage.
So, so.
When you see that in the cities, because they do that, they make green spaces on top of the buildings or they make it really.
Yeah.
Create a big green space around the building that has gone up quite a ways, so. Uh, it's. We, we need that, or we're gonna lose, we're just gonna be like Joe said.
And I just said fifteen percent just to start the discussion.
Then somewhere in a concrete jungle, you know? Oh, now we get two iPhones. iPhone and an iPhone ten.
Could we add that the? Structure must be, um. Architecturally aesthetic as determined by the planning board.
I mean, we have.
Subjective.
We have the architectural requirements now, so then just, then, then just kind of reinvent it in the wheel.
So there needs to be the architectural requirements. In towns ordinance. And if we wanna change those.
Well, just say, let's meet all the requirements the ordinance and leave it at that.
Okay. Then it's like, not even mentioned, obviously enough.
But I think. What number, before we leave that, what number would you tie to the green space versus the going up? What, what's?
Or going down.
Or down or up?
Yeah. Well, you, so you wanna increase.
Should be equal. Equal to footage, you know?
So you wanna allow a higher height above thirty five feet, if they have more green space, I mean. They have a bunch of tall.
Yeah, I know, I hear you. But you have more green space down.
I mean, I wanna build, I wanna build a hotel that's.
And.
Ten stories high, just like a. Tower.
Well, you, obviously you gotta make a limit. You know, but if, if you take one, if you take a look at the business on Main Street. There's very limited properties, so they, what's gonna happen is. The way I figure it is that it's either gonna start going back, another row of houses. Of businesses, or it's gonna start going up. And which would you rather, which would you rather see, the loss of? Residential spaces turning into business, or would you rather see? Businesses going up in a little more green space and allow them to go up a little more, so. Looks a little more residential, close to the street.
I don't see a lot of people taking advantage of it just because of the cost of building and having to go around the garage.
I agree.
Yeah, I know, there's a lot of money floating around in Main Street.
I think buying lots, they'll be buying the lots behind them and turning those into.
You think that?
Parking.
But we don't really wanna do that either, do we? We don't wanna lose.
They're gonna do it.
I.
I mean, we wanna try and say, look, if you've got something on Main Street, maybe you can go up a little higher, maybe you can.
And where they're gonna park. And that lot behind them, they tell the house.
Or they'll start.
I don't think.
Subterranean.
Well, I wonder if I.
No, go ahead.
No, Danielle was, I, you were talking, so you.
Well, that's okay, I.
I think we should allow it to be.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's, you know, there's not much space on Main Street left.
Well, I mean, we're giving them two levels underground, so it's something.
Can you remember when Mr. Patel next door? No three lots over the sale and you go out by the credit, you two of us told him.
Yeah.
Self-decent. The president, Patel, Patel told us certainly, believe. He mentioned about underground parking at hotel.
Yeah.
We keep, wasn't it conceptual?
Right.
Well, this guy.
I, I just don't wanna talk about specific, right, places like that, that especially that are. Yeah, but it would be.
I mean, specifically, you didn't have a specific guideline, but. Give input how we wanna progress with. Not, not saying one's for your favorite guy or that guy.
We're not doing this to single on one parties.
No, no, no.
I, I like the idea of allowing the underground parking in exchange for less lock coverage. Okay, you know, it takes in that aspect of underground parking, but, but. Um. It doesn't use, allow them to use that as.
But I think there's.
To, to, you know, build right up to the, the absolute.
But I think we, we gotta. Be specific about that, says that the trade-off is in green space versus underground parking.
Yeah.
It's not just, they can't just use it for. Something else, it, it has to be green space.
We did that.
Well, I'm saying, we're just gonna say, well, it's not a coverage, so that's basically green space, whether they. It's gonna be in perfect, previous, previous service, excuse me.
That, just some, so it's related in that way, I, I. I'd be.
Remember why? We gave the mountain club a little mountain. Mission put that underground parking in. It also part of what is none of, none of the front part building, because in the backside, we tend to put that. Where they use, they'll go to parking if they have to. Yeah, they can park under the tent for the now. That's a similar idea we proposed back then.
Yes, I still have pneumonia.
Well, fuck, that's you, so.
Okay.
Oh. Wrote something down, is that?
Just. I mean, what I'm hearing is that. More than floor, more than four floors would be allowed. Uh. If there was two levels of underground parking and. That, uh, uh, accompanied with fifteen percent. Uh, le- less lock coverage.
Uh, uh, so, uh, so what if we put out two levels? Up to two. Up to two levels of underground parking. In exchange for. Fifteen percent reduction in lock coverage or something like that. That zone's lock coverage is. So, something that, I mean, just wanna spell it out, this is, if you wanna get those two levels, this is what you're gonna do.
And now are you talking about every zone, or are you talking about, cause there's different height requirements in different zones?
So, I mean, we're kinda talking about.
This, this was in. General use Village Center Rural is in a mountain residential zones. Is the thirty five feet four floors. The other ones are twenty five feet three floors, so it'd be those, those same, same zone that were. That have the thirty five. Feet four floors.
I don't think we need to make any exception for underground parking in, uh. Small business development, village residential and general residential, we don't allow business uses, yeah, so.
Where do we get the heights requirements that are?
Page forty-one in green. Forty-one? On the red line, green line version.
The last page of.
I was looking on the. Ordinance to see where.
We wanna say the planning board. May allow. Up to two levels of additional underground parking?
Then, when you're back, well, I think it's a good idea, you're not really using objective criteria.
Dimensional chart. Let's see.
Let us allow. And. Or use that.
The, oh, it's still, they're still all. Related, okay. It's all about twenty, so goes from twenty-five to thirty-five feet.
So the twenty-five feet, that's all in residential zones, I think that's.
Well, it says small business development, village residential and a general residential zone.
Right, so that's. Small business development, that's the industrial park, you know, getting someone to build an underground parking.
Village residential and a general residential.
Village, um, residential is around the school.
Right.
And the general residential is down here on Breck Street. And there's another piece, I think, over. Um. Over. I think Maltese Farm Road or something.
Either way, it's, it's residential use, it's not.
Yeah.
Right, so you're not gonna have people building behind you.
So basically, it's the green area, well, this is gray. It's like light green, so this is the village residential. So that's Maple Street, Church Street, Olive Street, School Street, Pleasant Street, and then school. And then the darker green here is like Franklin's, this is, uh, general residential. That's Franklin Street, the Breck Street, West Street.
What if we made it all thirty-five, just took out the twenty-five?
Uh, east, the, the east over, um. Next to the lagoons, I think where. I think Loon has their. Some snowmaking stuff over there. This is, this is Toll Road where. Uh, Peter Cavoni.
Cavoni, yeah.
Um, and then there's a little piece up here. That's Good New Road, Maltese Farm Road. Um. So those are. Those are the short building areas.
Is, is there a downside to making it all up to thirty-five feet?
Which is to.
I mean.
Me not going down.
So thirty-five feet is a standard.
Sick if we haven't. It, no one's really complaining to any of those zones, they need a higher building.
Well, but if we made it all thirty-five feet, then there's one standard. Standard is thirty-five feet, standard is four floors. And if you wanna do two levels of parking, I need to, if you wanna.
I, you know, I guess we spent time talking about destructing, destruction of character of the community, I think. Always, I mean, ever got an extra ten feet in the residential zone, that would change the character quite a bit.
Yeah, I would don't like that to do.
You think? Look at some of the buildings on Main Street that have gone up.
I assume that's, that's Main Street. That's, that's why you have zones.
I wouldn't want the house to crawl over and going up and.
Get to do it, I think get to do it.
Yeah.
It's their property.
What's that?
Says their property.
I guess, no one's coming and asking.
I suppose they're gonna ask for a variance if they want it.
Well, yes, enough people ask for it, we can look at it.
Yeah. And maybe that's the way to look at it too, is a. You know, it. Maybe that's one of the things we should look at, is that. What are people coming in requesting variances and special exceptions for? And whatever they're. Coming in and requesting most.
Then, then we know the ordinance isn't working.
Right. So other than that, why, why should we bother to change anything? I mean, cause everybody seemed to be pretty happy, are they being asking for variances, special exceptions? So just take a look at what those two things are and say. You know, people are asking for these, maybe we should address those items.
So you wanna, maybe you suggest we don't make any changes tonight here?
Well, uh, uh, maybe, or. We can make the changes, some changes, but I think we should probably take a look at what the people are asking for variances and special exceptions, say. Should some, something else, or, I, I don't know what it is they're asking for.
I, I think that was one of the things was retaining, I mean, rock walls, retaining walls and setbacks, I mean.
If someone's looking for those, then we should be looking at that ordinance and saying.
On the list.
Yeah.
Good. On the end.
Can we look at the case for the end?
When they built it, still primary east thirty-five, they put a lot of door in there. Get the bit of looking, the occupation, the flat roof on top. But you can't see anything, man can't, because on top is right in the middle.
But of course, that's, well, you can't see that really from Main Street, so it doesn't affect. Affect the character of the town.
Do we have? Do we have a?
When this building gone, that's gone, there's gonna be much character left.
Special exceptions and variances that have been requested for the past year or two.
The variances are mostly.
Not that many.
There's not that many, uh, but they're mostly setbacks, you know, doing stuff in the setback here. Um, if there's small lots over here, um. You know, they wanna put an addition or additional. Uh, go up another story. For some places that are already in setbacks. Uh, I guess they decided that. You know, that's perfectly okay. Um. Our town attorney did, I guess, and, uh. It's just basically, um, going in the setback here. So, some of them are rot, retaining laws, but a lot of them are like a deck or the. The, uh. Well, everybody's talking, everybody's watching too much H T V during COVID. So everybody wants to have like a living space outside with neighbors and. You know, levels and, you know. Graceful looking retaining walls and. Lots of, uh, cement.
Should, should we be changing?
So.
Should we be looking at or changing any of our setbacks so people can use more of their property?
I don't think, I don't really think so. I mean, the, the setbacks, you know, the. That cause people to gasp really are. The setbacks of twenty-five feet in that area, mountain residential. Where the residents asked for that. You know, they came forth and they asked you favor petition and. Um, you adopted their request for twenty-five feet.
Adopted the residents at times request, not the residents.
I was just gonna say that, it's time to change.
We definitely.
Many.
I, when I did that, it's down.
It's not that many.
Yeah. I mean, you know, retaining walls before we decide which find them in a structure. There's no problem, you just correct, do it, we change. Right, so that's creative problems, we should look at that. So do we have something here that's, we're kind of. In off track yet? Uh. No more than four floors. Above the ground level, as mentioned, through any vertical plane of the building. We have verbiage, uh, to make an exception. Underground parking?
Well, uh, somebody, somebody wants to massage that language, I mean, I have very cryptic notes here. Well, uh, somebody, somebody wants to massage that language, I mean, I have very cryptic notes here. Somebody else has a clearer vision of what you're desire.
However, you could put out there, however, um. Two levels of underground parking is allowable. With corresponding fifteen percent reduction in the maximum lot coverage.
Can we just leave it up to the planning board to make that decision?
Oh. Then you kinda, so well, gee, I kinda like it today. I mean, yes, we want someone to be able to look at the ordinance and draw up something they think is gonna pass.
I agree.
Knock come in and say, if you can roll the dice, hopefully we get approval.
Well, everyone, okay.
I mean, so, I mean, I'm just giving my.
I I, I will, I just. I like to make it worthwhile. If if you're going to.
Yeah.
Get to to make sure that you get more.
I mean, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of people taking advantage of it, frankly.
I don't either, but if they wanna. I think people that are get, right, the people are gonna take advantage of it are. Dennis or someone else, you know, or South Peak or.
Don't take me to come with a special acceptance. We can invest five, ten million dollars. Two week difference is going with special acceptance, that could be what difference.
How about that, OJ?
What?
How about if we say that they can? Do what you're, you're talking about two floors. With a special exception, and that way there, they have to come before at least the.
You just said you'd like it to make it so that they know what they come in for and.
Use your criteria, but say that that they have to commit for a special exception in order to get it. Cause they're places in our.
Criteria does the, does a zone void it?
Same criteria, pretty much it's in there.
Including financial hardship.
Easy to get an emergency.
Financial hardship, but 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 they deal with, um, site.
Yeah.
Tranquilly the neighborhood, whether it's noisy, all of those, so they already set up a. So let me said that.
See, well.
Two, two levels of parking can be acquired by special exception up to two levels.
Let's say for argument's sake. The minimum lot, maximum lot coverage is seventy percent. I'm gonna go, well, gee, I'm gonna, I want a special exception, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna reduce that lot coverage to sixty eight percent if I can have two. Two and two levels of underground parking.
But then the the C B A would take a look at that, I would hope and say. Where is it, how's it gonna fit in with the neighborhood? As a, you know what I mean, as as general priest, the car is coming and going by.
Why couldn't we do that?
Well, we can.
I mean, we go up the site plan review. I just, I just don't.
Well, I think the advice that we got before is that the planning board is better. Able to make that determination than zoning board.
Yeah.
Um, is supposed to be.
Well, yeah. I mean, we just had the discussion of what are people coming in for special exceptions, so we can eliminate them, now we're saying, well, let's throw this one into a new. Uh. I'm, I'm just saying, what if we said that, 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 um, there shall be no more than, um. Four floors above or below ground level as mentioned, through any vertical plane of the building. However, up to two levels of underground parking. In exchange for a fifteen percent uh, reduction in lot coverage can be granted by the planning board.
Fifteen percent, good, let's keep in the maximum height of the building.
Mention it, it's, the sentence above, it says the maximum height is thirty five.
Thirty five feet.
Right, when I change.
Right, is this.
Is fifteen percent enough?
Yes, I mean, I just. Pick, I mean, tell you guys.
Start point, what's fifteen percent of a? Lot.
At the back of that.
Yeah, so make it a lot, make it twenty percent. Twenty or twenty five? They can always ask for more or less.
I think if they're doing underground parking, it's, it's cause there's not enough. Above that, not doing it just cause they wanna spend money. Um. I mean, I don't, I I would think fifteen percent. It's really significant, I mean, that might be one of the, I. I didn't even have to look at it. Would one, if we, if it said you can reduce.
Fifteen percent, if fifteen percent is one park.
Is one, one.
One parking space, it doesn't make much.
No, but if it's one whole parking level.
If it's parking level, it makes it, but if it's one parking spot.
The second one.
What's minimum lot size?
I think it says, well, it's different in every zone, but.
Yeah, it's right on the dimensional chart, it, uh.
Let's, we're.
Lot size is, uh. General use is fifteen thousand square feet.
Fifteen.
Returnable maximum lot coverage.
Oh, lot, that lot coverage, all right, so.
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent village center, seventy percent village residential, sixty percent. General residence.
It's not gonna be in general in.
Village center, rural residential and mountain residential.
So that's about five thousand, so.
So realistically, it's really gonna go need the general use of village center, rural residential and mountain residential. You don't allow hotels, et cetera.
Right.
So it's really those two zones we have to look at.
I suppose it's a good start point, fifteen percent, we see that, you know, people are taking advantage of it, maybe.
Well, I mean. Five years from now, that you only have one that takes advantage of it, I don't think you're gonna get a lot. I mean, it could, I could be wrong, but. General use. So we're gonna, we're gonna discuss something.
No, no, family housing is allowed in mountain residential.
Yeah, that's for the condos, isn't it?
Right. All right. I'm okay with a fifteen percent start.
But I think realistically, it's more so hotel motel.
And the hotel motels are permitted by special exception.
Came in for hotel motel.
Well, South Peak has.
Yeah, the general use, not mountain residential.
Right.
The guy up on the highway came in. Uh.
He'll redo it.
He's talking about mountain residential.
Oh, I thought you talked about, when, when the last time where somebody came in.
And also restaurants are a lot of way special exception of the.
Again, who's, I don't picture, I mean, I don't, I think we just.
Well, I think it, you know.
Too many variables.
You're right, but you gotta think about South Peak, and there's a lot of changes could happen over there. Does it matter if if off the beaten Main Street, probably not.
Well. I mean, something to think about, I think, let's just. We don't, we're not ready to, I mean, we don't have to make a decision tonight, we're just talking.
Yeah.
Before we make a change, anyway, if we go to public hearing.
Right, so like, really, this is really technically a work session.
I guess we're going home.
Gosh, TV flick.
You, even, even the light fixtures are bored.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
Eight o'clock, so.
About that time.
I mean, we've gone through all of these red line.
Yeah.
Things, I, I think we made some progress, I.
Yep. Um, so why don't we? Work on other changes on the twenty eighth, fifteenth, we have a relatively. Heavy schedule.
Yeah.
So you can circulate OJ's list, and also wanna consider that. We have three zones in town, three areas in town that is own general use, we have. Lots over here, some up here, and we have Route Three, so they might.
The vanilla, the light yellow, it's a general use.
It would be, it would be nice to be able to. Do something with a zoning up on the highway to be able to get more, spur more usage up there, I don't know what, but.
Well, I mean, the three.
Gonna go make copies.
The three distinct areas of town, they're all zoned the same way. I mean, I mean, we don't have to make any changes to the zones this year, but. We renamed them, you know, generally is one, two, three. And then in the future, we could make adjustments on four.
There's three, yeah. Uh, going like Jim said, Lucy has its own distinct problems. It should be zoned in its own area. Took put a certain classification, it's only in building it. But it should retrieve that different area than downtown Lincoln and up here, even aside orders through three tally.
And I haven't talked to anybody that doesn't think that. Root up on the highway would not make a great place for. All sorts of employee housing or stuff like that, I mean. It, the town could. Do something to incentivize that by saying you, you can put more on it, or you put, you know.
Well, I mean, we have done it, only, only one person's taken, taken advantage of.
Maybe we need to ask North Country Councils, how, how would we fix? Someplace like the highway and try and incentivize it to be.
We'll call it a green down the west beach.
Maybe we could ask that question, cause that certainly would resolve some division with the town. You know, if we could somehow create that and get it going, you know. That would certainly go a long ways. I mean, developer. I mean. Even make it to the point of taxation.
Well, we have that too, we have business, business enterprise zone up there.
Yeah.
Didn't remember what it's called, but yes.
Yeah.
Um, I wonder if that could be a topic for the next. On the lead topic for our next discussion. A separate, a separate zone. And what that should entail.
You know, do we wanna invite? Um, that this maybe check daily? They're working on, he's, he's in with a group of people or something that are trying to do employee housing, maybe find out what their.
Yeah.
I mean, do they have pitfalls, do they have questions and say, now the reason we can't go up there is because of this, this, or this? I don't know.
I don't think we've had any meetings recently.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there were some things that were stopping. Entrepreneurs or people who wanna invest from using Route Three.
Yeah, I don't know.
Cause you see in buying, I mean, Lou buys places and camps in authority. Uh, Dennis buying places in Woodstall. I mean, so, I mean, different developers are buying different land parcels of the place, why not? The highway would be a great place.
So, because those cabins going in two for employee housing.
Right, but I mean, if I have places that are already built.
Need to be a bill. But the back of the mini store. You've got new buildings in back.
I didn't bring, so that's by my computer, finally. Oh.
Anything else? Uh, does anyone have anything else?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
What's four one five?
On the back.
Hey, wanna talk to them?
Oh, okay. What the hell is this?
Maybe you should have read that first.
I probably should have.
Yeah.
Oh, that's your, um, that's your lucky number, don't play the.
Here we go, I'll play that number to.
We won't see you next meeting.
We have, we have a lot more than, uh, the commune.
All right, so.
Couple of people.
So is your motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? They don't identify themselves.
Where like, where are the?
What Rem was calling it, it's Lincoln has a lot of capacity, but he's waiting for the states. Even more magistrate or county, and that, and enforcement, I don't know if you do that.
Yeah, I guess I know that. Jordan Conway?
Even Conway.
Oh.
But when this man came back, I'd say left here. There's no place to live for people going to the plains, out in Kentucky, but.
Not really a resort area, any of that, whatever.
See, a lot of Conway is not, so, they're on, probably different towns. Not all Conway, different. Areas, different towns, different businesses.
But.
I would blow it down.
Yeah. I, I, I think we did it, Carol. Carol, just.